I'm sorry.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Meeting, tonight's meeting is being both video and audiotaped. If anybody else is doing so, please report the word. Got them? Okay. There are no minutes to be approved tonight, so we'll go to old business. Mr. LaMash, do you have anything?
No, sir.
What's your gagging?
I'm good, sir.
The only thing I have, I'm just going to comment on a recent resident complaint that we have regarding the water issue up on Knoxville Road. We are in the process of looking at this. Our highway surveyor has been up there. Board Health's been contacted. Councilperson's been contacted. So, we are looking at this. It is a concern. We should have more info as time warrants, but we are looking at this. This is a pretty serious problem. I mean, we do have the Warren fever management plan that was in place back in 2005 when we had a real issue up there. So, our highway surveyor has been up there. We are looking at the problem, so I just wanted to address that this evening. I have no other old business, so I think with that, we'll go to comments and concerns. Yes, Mrs. Rupert. What can I do for you?
A follow-up on my question last week in regards to why Officer LaFleur was allowed to start his K-9 training a week before the grant was signed.
For what? Anything on that, or will we take it?
Please, you're pending after.
I did speak to the chief regarding that, and the training was scheduled at that time, so that was the slot that was available to the officer at that point, even though we hadn't received the funding. The training was already scheduled, so he allowed him to go. He does have money in his budget for other trainings also. We had already sent out the letter and approved, we hadn't approved the grant application itself, but we were already sent a letter supporting it, so it was moving forward. But the training was scheduled at a certain time, and he had to go at that time. That was the response I got from the chief.
And do you believe that?
I believe it. I do. I do believe it.
It really doesn't matter at this point. He is a strong chief. He's in charge of his own budget. You can send him for any training he wishes. However, in this instance, the money is coming in.
So, if the grant, let's say for some reason, the board did not approve the grant, and the chief can just go on.
Well, he has, he does have a line item for training, so he could have actually funded it out of that line if he needed to do so for ongoing training. But like I said, we had submitted a letter of support, so it was pretty much moving forward. And he does have that line item for training to use.
But you know, you keep using that he's a strong chief, and it seems like he can do whatever he wants. So, how do you, as a board, evaluate his position if he can do whatever he wants? He's not going to listen to your evaluation.
I guess, I mean, to comment on that, I guess my hopes would be that we would work, the chief would work with the board as a whole. I mean, I know he's, I speak to him, he speaks to Mr. LaMash and Mr. Gagnon at times, so yeah, the ultimate goal here is even though he's a strong chief, our fire chief's a strong chief, is that we're working with them. I don't want to so-called micromanage their department, and I have confidence that our chiefs are doing the right thing for the town of Warren. There is some directive that does come from us, with that being said, but I don't want to completely run the department. I mean, we can question things and ask things, and hopefully we're getting a truthful and honest answer when it's asked.
Just seems he runs the town and does what he wants.
He runs the police department. I can tell you that. That's his, that's his department.
I was just disappointed that, you know.
I understand. Keep in mind, the evaluation process is moving forward. I'm hoping to have those completed sometime by this week of the four that are up for evaluation and the contracts that we're working, the employment agreements we're working on. So, the evaluation process, as far as our office is concerned, we're moving forward with what our responsibilities are and who we have to evaluate. And that is one that's on the list to be evaluated. Anybody else? Mrs. Rupert.
I want to warn everyone not to come to the selectmen's meeting and ask any questions regarding the Warren Police Department, because you'll be labeled a loser on the internet and further defiled by some coward.
Okay. We'll take that under consideration. I don't want to name any names or how you came about them. I appreciate you sharing that information with us.
Mm-hmm. Just I'd like the people in Warren to be very careful. Don't come if it's anything to do with the Warren Police Department.
Okay. Well, we do hope that we have attendance at our meetings for everything. If you do feel the need to come, please for other things, but I appreciate that, Mrs. Rupert. Stanley?
I have two questions. One, the follow-up on the K-9 dog with Mr. LaMash. He responded to my eight questions. One question he didn't answer. My next question is, do the other two board members read his statements?
Uh, no, sir. I did not read his answers to the questions.
Then, you know, like Mr. LaMash, he was given a responsibility. He answered. If that's the best this board can do, shame on you.
I wouldn't have answered your question if I'd seen writing. You couldn't ask me, and I would have answered to you, I would not have given it to you in writing.
I have another question. Mr. Chair? Police Department.
Yes.
I understand that Officer Chase has retired.
You understand Officer Chase has retired?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is that true?
I believe he has gone through the process. I'm not sure if it's officially yet. I think it's still, I'm not sure if it's finalized. The process has been initiated, yes.
My next question was, we've spent $100,000 paying him for one year. He hasn't shown up to work, doesn't even sign his own time cards. My question is, can we go to our insurance company and be reimbursed for the money we spent for nothing?
I can't comment on why the process took the length of time that it took, because there's issues that we just haven't mentioned, we can't comment on. But I assure you, we did everything we possibly could to expedite the situation. I've been asked this question by numerous residents the last few weeks, the last few months. So, while it took a while, a lot of it is out of our control when it comes to retirement, hair, what's your count of retirement, there's just things, it just, it takes time. There's timelines to get these submitted and paperwork submitted. There's a lot of different departments involved, the treasurer's office, our office. It takes time. And the process, in my opinion, could have been expedited a little quicker, but I think we did the best of what we had to work with under the conditions we had. And like I said, I can't comment on anything that was discussed with the officer privately. Anybody else?
Just to answer these facilities, I didn't omit that question or skip it. I didn't know, I didn't know it skipped it over in the red and over, told me I skipped the second one.
Good enough. Fact was, it wasn't asked.
So, regarding that, let me comment on that too. If you'd like me to respond to those eight questions, I'll gladly respond to them. I'm not going to, I'll read Mr. LaMash's answers, but the request was made to Mr. LaMash.
No, the requests are made to the board, sir.
I'm sorry?
The requests are made to the board.
Correct.
To get answers on the late questions. You delegated that to Mr. LaMash. But the board should have been aware of what his answers were.
Okay. That's fair enough. That's fair enough. Okay. Yes, Mr. LaBoy. Chief LaBoy.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to update the board on an issue that the board is aware of. There was a complaint made to the board with regard to an employee of the fire department and with regard to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32, Section 3. That law is basically, it mandates the automatic retirement of firefighters and police officers with regard to their age of 65, once they, once they, they reach the age of 65. As the board is aware, a complaint was made regarding an employee of the department in respect to that law. I'd just like to update the board as to where we stand with that. As the board knows, it was town council's opinion that that person be placed on administrative leave until it could be investigated further. I spoke with town council, had a meeting with them today. What I've done at this point is I placed that, that person is now going to be strictly and assigned to, and an appointment slip is going to be made in the next day or two to assign them to an ambulance first responder. There was, there'll be no responding to fires at this point until the situation can be further corrected, but it's out of my hands as regard to legislation will have to be filed with regard to the, an upcoming special town meeting to get that issue put on the warrant. So, it was, we've come to a mutual agreement to allow the member to remain active, as he has served the community for already 48 years and wants to make 50 years of it on the, which I think is a tremendous effort. So, it's unfortunate that the situation is here, but we're dealing with it, and that person has had their, their duties changed to strictly ambulance, which would not allow them to be subject to that particular law at this time until that, until the legislation is done. So, I just wanted to update the board as to this point, as to where we stand on that issue.
Okay. Great. I did see the response from Tim today.
Yes.
And I know we spoke over the weekend regarding it, so hopefully that works out for the best and, you know.
I certainly hope it does.
It's not fortunate, but it's Massachusetts General Law, and we're kind of in a pinch right here. We want to make sure, you know, the liability issue is there, so I appreciate your work on that, and we'll move forward with it.
Thank you.
Hey. Anything else? Five minutes of good correspondence, Mr. Gagnon.
The office received notification under Chapter 61A for property located on South Bridge Road in Warren. The town of Warren has 120 days to exercise its right of first refusal to the property. Mr. Chairman, I can speak to this, can I?
All right.
This is part of the cell tower. They have a deal with the people who own the property behind the water tower up on South Bridge Road. This is an optimal location because it hits both sides of Marks Mountain and should give the optimum amount of coverage to the town. So, hopefully this will move forward in no time. We can get this going, because the sooner we get service in the town, the easier it's going to be to get a business in here.
Won't fail him.
Mr. and Mrs. Booth? Oh. I live, I believe Loveville. Out of what? Uh, they live in, residents of Loveville, living in Loveville.
Chairman Nardi received an email from an individual with concerns over bylaws and rubbish slash litter being left by the roadside, which turns into the town's responsibility to remove.
Um, quickly on that, I've had numerous complaints regarding rubbish, mattresses, trash, things just discarded down the road. I did send a resident a copy of the bylaw that we have currently in place. Some residents recently have voiced their concerns, but maybe we need to address this bylaw at an annual meeting to get a little bit stricter guidelines or stricter rules on this to help police this better. I urge anybody, if you see anybody discarding mattresses or anything like that, TVs as such, call the police department, have them come out and investigate. Hopefully, we can catch the individuals, but we are taking the advisement. We may actually bring a bylaw change or an amendment to the bylaw, we definitely have the books to help fix the problem.
The office received an email from Louise Mundell, Secretary for the Warren Action Committee, requesting an update on the recently completed PARP, Property Assessment and Reuse Planning Project. They are inquiring whether or not the Board of Selectmen have any plans on follow-up for this project and if any recommendations have been implemented.
I don't, I don't have, well, Mr. LaMash, you want to say anything?
I don't know of anything we've been meant to get this to work on, process we didn't know.
Correct. And planning, we're discussing it last week, and I was at the planning board meeting. I mean, we're not ready to make a recommendation as far as this board's concerned, but we are still looking at it. It is, it is an important part of the town, and as soon as I have more time to sink my teeth into it, and the board does, we'll move forward with it, I think. So, who we're at right now? Two minutes.
The office received an email from Chief Sparakowski informing the board that his office received the $25,000 check from the Stanton Foundation related to the K-9 program.
Chief has received the money, it's been deposited, it's room by treasurer's office, $25,000 is here.
The office received an email from Senator Goby's office informing us that the Warren Fire Department has been awarded $4,237 through fiscal year 16 SAFE Grant.
And you want to comment on that?
The SAFE Grant is something that we, we apply for that allows me to continue the SAFE program within the elementary school system. We're very active in the school system, and the money is used specifically to purchase items and training and anything that's, that's related to the program, we can purchase from that for the kids and make sure that that program continues. So, it's a great, it's a great asset to the state, the state has.
The office received notification from the Department of Conservation and Recreation that the Warren Fire Department has been awarded $600 for funding under the 2015 Volunteer Fire Assistance Program.
Just that? Real quick, that's a matching grant for the town. It comes out of the fire department's budget, but we were using that to replace some much needed equipment on our, specifically for fire, violent firefighting. So, that came on, that was a good addition for us.
And lastly, Chief LaBoy provided his monthly report for December 2015.
Okay. It is 7:15. We have a public hearing scheduled for the FY 2016 CDVG public hearing. Mr. Christopher Dunphy from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is here as presenter. I think I will, at this time, sir, turn it over to you.
Thank you for having me this evening. And for those that haven't heard, in the many years I've been coming up here to present about this project, CDVG stands for Community Development Block Grant. This is a federal program that initiated in the early 1970s, and each year, the federal government puts an appropriation together to fund cities and towns throughout the country through this program to address, you know, various urban and suburban initiatives to, you know, address slum and blight issues, as well as provide assistance for low to moderate income persons and the development of, it could be infrastructure projects, public works, you know, water, sewer, stormwater drainage, streets, sidewalks, housing assistance. It can fund planning projects and initiatives such as the Property Assessment and Reuse Planning Project, and also social services, as an example. So, it's a pretty wide project, and it can fund many different initiatives, so long as it addresses one of three national objectives. The first national objective is the, sort of the remediation of slum and blight. The second national objective is whatever projects that are developed need to primarily assist low to moderate income persons. So, I say low to moderate income persons. As an example, a household of one person, that moderate income threshold is approximately $45,000, and for each and every additional persons in a household, that, that threshold goes up. It technically is 80% of median income, so without getting too technical, I just wanted to emphasize it's to assist low and moderate income individuals. The vast majority of these federal funds go to what they call entitlement cities. So, this is where the federal government provides monies directly to large cities, Boston, Worcester, Springfield, and so on and so forth. After those disbursements are made to the entitlement communities, the federal government provides monies to the state. In this case, it's the Department of Housing and Community Development at the state level. So, smaller communities, such as Warren, are allowed to compete for the remaining funds that are available through the state, Department of Housing and Community Development. So, I've been assisting Warren and other communities throughout the area develop competitive applications that are highly developed with a bunch of different committees and public involvement. And we put together these applications that hopefully resolve some of the needs that have been presented by the community. So, in this case, in Warren, I work regularly with the Community Development Advisory Committee. We have one member with us tonight, and Chairman Nardi also serves as a member on this committee. So, we meet periodically, and we evaluate some of the pressing needs of the community, and we try to determine what projects are going to meet the needs of this community in the areas of housing, public works, infrastructure, and social services. These are the eligible projects I previously spoke of. And back in September, we actually published a, we had a public meeting at the Warren Senior Center where we gathered to discuss the town's community development strategy. This is a strategy that's on record and has been approved by the town, which sort of outlines needs in a general sense, as well as comes up with a list of priority projects that the community hopes to address, either with community development block funds or other fundings that might become available. So, it's from this list, this community development strategy, we extract projects that we think will make sense in these competitive applications. Okay? Any questions so far? Okay, great. So, we held this incidentally on line number three. I had a typo. That was December 28, 2015, okay, where we sent that community development strategy to the state for their review. So, again, we met in September and came up with this formal strategy, which is good for three years. It's on record here with the town, if anyone needs to look at it. And it's, like I said, it, it has a list of general priorities, as well as very specific projects that we hope to, to address. Now, one of the provisions through this program is, as hard as the federal agency, Housing and Urban Development, they ask that communities that are using these funds, direct these funds to, to areas that are determined to be in the greatest need, so they can see improvements happen, you know, readily. So, they call this target areas. They like to see the program infuse these federal funds into designated target areas. And now, the state said, well, communities that have a population of less than 5,000 people can refer to their whole town as a target area. Communities that have a population that exceeds 5,000 have to actually formally designate a target area. So, working with the Community Development Advisory Committee, we developed a target area as we had to require through this program. And it essentially is the two village centers of Warren and West Warren. And the Warren target area also extends up towards the Turnpike to encapsulate what we know to be some low and moderate income housing areas, specifically the mobile home parks. So, those are the target areas. Those are the areas with the oldest homes. Those are the areas with the, the built public works infrastructure. In other words, they have water lines and sewer and whatnot. So, we know the, these are predominantly the areas that have the greatest need with the oldest homes. Okay? So, with that in mind, again, working with the Community Development Advisory Committee, we came up with five projects that we're presenting tonight to be part of this community development block grant application due on February 12th next month. Okay? And those five projects include housing rehabilitation assistance, okay? A large infrastructure design project in the School Street, Quaybog Street neighborhood, and three public social service projects. And that's continued assistance to the Adult Learning Program based out of Ware, an initiative that we refer to as the Planned Approach to Community Health, or CATCH program, as we call it, and Domestic Violence Prevention Program. So, those are the five initiatives. Now, the Housing Rehabilitation Program is a program that provides assistance to homeowners that need housing rehab assistance, and they want to bring their properties up to code. They have roofs that are failing. They need new windows, siding, septic systems, perhaps a water well. Maybe it's a heating issue. So, as long as you fall within the guidelines that I previously talked about, those low to moderate income guidelines, you're eligible for housing rehabilitation assistance. Working with the town, this has been an ongoing project for, gosh, well over 15 years now. Very successful program. We have many people on the waiting list, and we get to them eventually. In this particular program, as Warren, over the past few years, has focused more of their CDVG dollars towards infrastructure, this year, the committee is recommending that we, to build up the housing rehab program again. So, it says $406,000, but the vast majority of those funds are dedicated towards Warren. So, we hope to at least address 10 units in Warren, two in Ware, and two in Hardwick. Okay? If I didn't say it, this proposed application is, is proposed to be a regional application with the towns of Ware and Hardwick. This is something that, again, we've done over the years, and it's very successful to collaborate with other local communities in, in this competitive grant application. And I have joint authorizations from both Ware and Hardwick at this point, expressing their, their desire to be part of this application and also authorizing them to participate. So, they're, they're in favor of it, should Warren choose to proceed. So, a little bit more about the housing rehab program. For those that might not have heard of it, the program can provide up to $35,000 for qualified property owners, and this could be for owner occupants as well as investor owners. Okay? And what it is, we structure a loan, we call it a deferred payment loan initially, to take care of some of the code issues. And then, if a homeowner remains in that house for 15 years and does not sell, after the 15 years, the loan becomes forgiven, and it becomes a grant. However, should the property owner have to sell or is looking to sell within that 15-year period, there is a recapture of those funds that goes back into the program. Okay? And again, this is to resolve code issues. This is not for remodeling or putting on additions. It's to bring properties up to code to those that really need this type of assistance. You have failing roofs, poor windows, no heating system that doesn't work properly. These are the types of, of folks that we like to provide assistance to, and of course, that meet those income guidelines. It also, the program can be made available to investor owners, but we ask for a little skin in the game. Okay? Either an investor owner is asked to provide a 25% match to the cost of the project. If they don't have those sort of funds in hand, they can structure a 50-50 deal. Another 50% can come from the program as a, as the loan or the grant, and the other 50% can be structured as a payback loan over a 15-year period at 0% interest. So, they are available to investor owners. They often don't take advantage of the, of the program. I'd like to see investors come to the program a little bit more often to, to bring the rental properties back into good condition. So, I want to make sure that we are all aware that the program is available for both owner occupants as well as investor owners. Okay? And again, the vast majority of this program is dedicated towards Warren households. Okay? The next program is something that, back in 2011, we did a comprehensive planning study in what we call the School Street Neighborhood. Quaybog Street, Prospect Street, School Street, Lombard, Moore, Hillside, Richardson. Am I forgetting any? Otis, thank you. So, we called, we dedicated this as an area within the community that it was identified as having deficient public works. Okay? We know that the water mains within this neighborhood are, in some cases, over 100 years old, and they're, they're not functioning as well as they could. They're undersized and not meeting the needs of fire protection or portable water. So, we know the water mains are old. The stormwater drainage, if anyone goes up there, they can see, it just kind of goes all over the place, and it's in dire need of some additional catch basins and redesign. The streets and sidewalks, in some cases, they're deplorable, you know, I have to be honest. It's an old neighborhood. It's in dire need of design, and it's in dire need of future improvements. These issues were identified within this planning study, and now we want to take it to the next step, and that's design, not, not construction at this point in time, because when I run into people, they say, oh, I thought this was going to start two years ago. No, it's a slow and steady process to make sure that we know what we're doing, and we have, make sure these projects are shovel-ready. So, it started with planning to identify the deficiencies. Now, we're proposing design specifically to Quaybog, Lombard, and Moore. Okay? 150,000-plus design project. And then, that's not providing construction. It's to provide detailed plans and specifications that we can use to pursue construction money in the future. So, if you run into anyone and they start talking about the area, no, no, no. It's just for design, engineering design. Okay? And hopefully, like I said, we can use these design plans and specifications to pursue a variety of funding, perhaps through this Community Development Block Grant Program. There's another program available through the state called Mass Works. So, there are various initiatives out there, but we need design plans to, to, to get those funds. Okay? So, that's the second project dedicated solely for Warren. The next three are very popular social service initiatives that have been part of this regional program for over a dozen years now. The Ware Adult Learning Center provides adult learning assistance to residents throughout the area, Ware, Hardwick, Warren, and they can provide GED training, as well as training to pursue future education beyond that. Over the years, I've been involved with them. They've assisted hundreds of area residents obtain their GEDs and go on into the workforce or onto higher education, or in some cases, into the service. So, it's a very So it's a very, very popular program. It's well utilized, and they need this assistance to help fill gaps within their funding, which also part of which comes from Department of Secondary and...
Education.
Yeah. Well, the Massachusetts Department of Secondary and Elementary Education, something like that, yeah. So very popular program, and something that we suggest that we take advantage of. The next project is, we used to call this Family Support Services, but it's evolved through some assistance with Jack Patrici here, and it's called the Planned Approach to Community Health. So we recognize that a lot of folks, some of which want to attend classes at the Ware Adult Learning Center, need counseling, daycare, transportation assistance in order for them to advance their education and their goals. So, and that's not what the adult learning centers, they're there to teach. So we needed this complimentary program to help, in large part, a lot of younger adults get the services, the wraparound services that they need so they can attend school and can get their GEDs and can go on to higher education. And that's where the PATCH program comes in. And I'll have Jack speak just a little bit more about that in a second. The last social service project, again, it's been a steady program, supported here in Warren for many years, and that's Domestic Violence Prevention. We have a regional task force that works with regional committees that provide training and advocacy services and education and awareness to the prevention of domestic violence. Very popular program. The chief of Warren has been actively involved in working with the task force, and they've done a lot of good in helping people that need that type of service. So I know we have at least one, maybe more people, that would like to provide some brief testimony on the block grant program and the project being presented. So I guess that's you, Jack.
Hi, I'm Jack Patrici. I'm in administration up at Valley Human Services up around the hill, and we have been running the Planned Approach to Community Health Service, PATCH. It had another name for a while, for about eight or nine years. And as Chris said, it does help people who are trying to get further their education or get to the job market through the Adult Learning Center in Ware, but it's also very flexible. It finds out, we have a small team who finds out what a community really needs and helps people get hooked up to the services they need. So if there's a lot of addiction issues going on, we actually help people get into addiction services to get help. We help people deal with housing instability and get to the food bank, find out the next step that they need to help move their lives forward. A need that we didn't realize a lot of folks had around here is medical advocacy, getting older folks hooked up to medical care and insurance and understand what's going on and what's going on with their insurance and what their medications mean and what their doctors are saying. And so PATCH is, responds to what a community needs. We have a small staff that will drive people, bring them into where they go, sit in their appointments, help explain what's going on, and work with people until they feel like they're ready and set on their next step. And we, also Monica Moran, who couldn't be here, who runs the Ware and the Regional Domestic Violence Task Force, asked me to say, I sit on that task force as well, that there are Warren residents on that task force, and there's outreach into the school system, and that we have an advocate who works with the dispatcher to provide domestic violence services to Warren residents who also go to attend the Healthy Relationship Support Group that we have up at Valley Human Services.
Great, thank you.
It's important to say that these three social services and the providers of those services are really plugged into the community at all levels, you know, whether it's working with the police, the local hospital, other social service providers. They know how to direct people to the services that are needed and what is available out there, and they really serve as the, I guess, the catchment for residents of this whole area, you know?
If I could add, you know, I live in Ware, and we know there's no public transportation, right? So we don't give anyone a card. We like drive them to the place, we walk them in, we make sure they're connected before we let anyone go. We're not like a place you call and we just tell you where to go. We come and get you, and we bring you, and we make sure you're really connected, because we do know, there's only like 35 people doing social service work around here, and we know them all, and we're all connected. They call us and say, hey, this person needs help. Do you serve Warren? Yeah, we serve Warren, we can help you. And we do the same for them.
So that said, while, you know, we're here at this public meeting, it's important to let folks know there are avenues of assistance. And people can call me directly at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, 413-781-6045, and I could help direct you to any of these services that we talked about. Jack Patrici is also available at ValleyHumanServices/BehavioralHealthNetwork now.
That's right.
And Ware.
At 413-967-6241. You could just ask for any kind of help, and we're connected to the right people who can come out and get you.
Right. Sort of like a one-stop shopping, if you will.
Yes.
Yeah. So that's the essence of the grant, an $855,000 regional grant with the towns of, including Warren as the lead community, with Ware and Hardwick, with those five projects that I presented. And, you know, I guess I'm asking for board approval, and I have a proposed motion that I developed for you folks.
So I think before we close the hearing, I'll open it up to, does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Duncan, I'd just like to ask a question in regards to the housing rehabilitation portion of the grant. As I'm sure you can imagine, Fire Department, Board of Health, Building Inspector spent a lot of time dealing with code violations and whatnot. How, what is the selection process for people to, number one, you know, apply for the grant, and who sits on the board with regard to giving out these sums of money for that? And the only reason I ask that is that because, you know, sometimes we deal with same, you know, owner, you know, and I just want to make, I just want to make sure the money goes to people that are going to, number one, fix it and maintain it and not let it go back to where we've had problems before. And I guess you can see where I'm going with it. How is the selection process? Who sits in on that? And, you know, is there input possibly from local agencies, local boards of health, fire, properties that we have had issues with before?
Sure.
Do they, are they put on a top 10 priority type of a list?
We don't discriminate. We do work this program on a first-come, first-served basis. The town of Warren, in some cases, when they're actually the lead community for this grant, is the final arbiter of any problem that arises, but they hire the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to manage this project. We have staff in place that have kept a lengthy waiting list with the dates that people have come to us and asked for help and have put them on the waiting list accordingly, based on the dates in which they asked or provided their initial information about asking for assistance. So we maintain the waiting list at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, okay? We're very good at getting to people, and it is on a first-come, first-served basis based on eligibility. So we don't try to discriminate and try to flush out, well, whose need is greater, because that would be an impossible task.
No, no, no. And I...
No, let me finish. So it's on a first-come, first-served basis based on applications that are received, okay? However, we do have a provision to provide emergency assistance. And when we get someone that calls us and says or claims that we have an emergency, I have no heat, this water is pouring in through my roof over our electrical box, these are things that have to be addressed, you know, for health and safety. So we look at health and safety issues, and we ask for either whichever entity it relates to. If it's a septic, we will ask the health board to weigh in and provide their assessment of the emergency, and they fill out a form and provide it to us. If it's a building issue, we ask the building inspector to look at the property and give us his assessment of what the emergency is and go from there. If we're going to address an emergency, moving someone up the list, we will only address that emergency alone. Like if it's, the heat, heating is an emergency, we'll just address the heating. That person will remain on the waiting list wherever their position exists and will address an emergency. So that's how we've been doing it. But again, I work for the whims and wishes of the community and the Community Development Advisory Committee. Anyone that would like to be involved, the committee's meetings are always open to the public. We encourage people to attend and participate. And I take my marching orders from the board and that committee.
If that answers the question. I believe you did.
Okay.
Anybody else have a question? Comments, concerns? None? Seeing none? Okay. I guess I will move forward closing the hearing, and I will make a motion that the town approves the submission of the proposed FY 2016 grant application and the respective activities to the DHCD, and furthermore, authorizes the CEO and CFO to sign the required forms when prepared. The town also acknowledges and accepts the recommendation of the Community Development Advisory Committee to include a request for funding for the Ware Adult Learning Center, a program of the literacy project, PATCH services, a program of the Valley Human Services and BHN, and Domestic Violence Prevention, a program of the Regional Domestic Violence Task, Violence, excuse me, Task Force managed by Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion, folks? I see none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I've left a series of forms that will require signatures. I'll leave the minutes from this meeting as soon as they're available, as well as the signing sheet. I hope everyone had a chance to sign it.
Is anyone not getting a good sign? Excuse me.
Ware and Hardwick, thank you.
So you work under us.
For this grant, I do.
So when we give you the directive, so next time you come in, can you cut this down?
Yes, sir. I'll do my best.
You know, nonetheless, Chris, you know, thank you very much for your efforts. You know, I sit on the committee with Mr. Rupel and some others in our town, you know, Pioneer Valley's planning commission's efforts and the funding sources that you guys present to us, and the abilities to be able to do these projects. If we didn't have them, we wouldn't be close to being able to discuss any of this. So without that and the involvement of our committees and the other communities, it's an important process, and it's much appreciated, the efforts that you put forward.
Two seconds, Mr. Lavash, if you don't mind. For those that have not heard of the program much up until today, I wanted to say, over the 12-plus years that we've been doing it, we've completed Bacon Street, Winthrop Terrace, Nelson Street, Crescent Street, North Street, West Warren, Chapel Street, Dean Street, Pleasant Street, Highland Street, we're starting this spring. We did the Dean Park, that those, the concession center and the play equipment at Dean Park and the new basketball courts. We expanded the senior center with these funds. Am I missing anything?
Cummins Pond Road.
Cummins Pond Road.
High Street.
And Main Street by the shops. These are all community development block grant projects guided by the Community Development Advisory Committee and authorized by the Board of Select. Thank you.
And Greg, is always checked for you?
No, that's, those are from USDA.
Oh, those are close enough.
No.
All right, folks.
No big checks from this department. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you all for attending the hearing tonight. We will move on now with, stepping on the list of the... Let everybody finish signing in.
Too late. Ms. Judith Roberts from the literacy bracket is here, showing her support coming from Greenfield, right?
We check around turns.
I bet you they went to Ware.
We went to Westbrook Field or something.
Well, welcome. We're covered. Jack had you covered.
Oh, you did? Thank you, town.
Said signing.
Signing.
Can I pick up to you when I need to...
Sure.
Okay, yep, no problem. Thank you.
Last thing, and I'm asking for that design project, the Ware Fire Department, Ware Police Department, the Warren Water District, and the sewer to provide support letters.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Jennings.
I will make a motion to exempt the town clerk's request for exemptions from education and training requirements for all worker positions.
Motion's seconded. I'll second it. But before we vote, I just wanted to comment real quickly. Our town clerk has presented to us a request to exempt all workers from having to do the conflict of interest law training, which is about a 20-minute training online. So the board's been asked to vote to see if we can exempt them from having to do the conflict of interest training every two years. So with that being said, I have a motion, I second it. Is there any further discussion from anybody here? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, may we amend Mr. Lavash's motion to the language that I provided. It's very specific.
Okay. Do you want to re-read the... Say it again? We're going to amend the motion to read the language specifically here.
Okay, you'll...
I'll second it. The town clerk is requesting for exemptions for the education and training requirements for the poll worker positions. Motion to exempt, sorry. Yes. The motion is to exempt 2016 appointed election officers, poll workers, from the distribution of summaries and the online training requirements. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three seconds.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Yes, sir. Okay. Senior tax abatement program for 2016, discussion, vote expected. Mr. Lavash, Mr. Gagel.
I'm starting. I'm looking at the list of receivables. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. No. Yeah. One for 20, correct? Is it open?
Historically, there's been a cap for 10.
Right.
But slowly, the board at their discretion has modified that amount, but it's up to the pleasure of the board, understanding that that amount goes against the overlay surplus account.
Correct. And it's 61.62.5 hours? Am I correct?
62 and a half hours.
62 and a half hours. It's a $500 abatement.
We're leaving it at 60s or less.
We are leaving it at 60s or less. That's for discussion tonight.
Yes.
Regarding that, that would have been brought up at the annual town meeting.
Do you need a motion of...
No, not that. We need a motion to accept the seniors that are present.
You have to set the quantity.
Correct.
The quota, and then you have to approve.
Can you explain what this is about?
Senior tax abatement? So seniors apply for a tax abatement. It's $500. They work, they perform 62, 62 and a half hours of services within the community, whether it be the school department, here at the town offices, the clerk's office, whatnot. We try to give preferences to people who haven't been able to take advantage of it first, and we go through the list, and we have to set the amount of people that we're going to allow to take advantage of the program. So that's what the board needs to determine this evening. I'm sorry, Beverly?
How many applications did you get?
Six. I don't think those...
16.
16. Well, I'm saying, I'm looking at the number of people that are on the list, 16. Just 16 seniors are applying for the abatement.
10 is the number. So... Who's had it the most? I mean, the first four definitely.
I think we need to make a motion to set the number. Correct? How many you want to? Because we want to approve the 16, or do we want to go with what we've had, the approval of 10? And then we're going to have to go through the vetting process of seeing, you know, who's done it in the past, which is something that we'll have to look into and make a recommendation out of the 16, who the 10 seniors, the people would be. So do we want to increase it to 16, which would be a total amount of $8,000, or... $8,000, or amend that to 16, or keep it at the amount of 10? I guess is the first.
Again, historically, the cap has been 10. In other years, the board has waived that.
whether it be the school department, here at the town offices, the clerk's office, whatnot. We try to give preferences to people who haven't been able to take advantage of it first. And we go through the list, and we have to set the amount of people that we're going to allow to take advantage of the program. So that's what the board needs to determine this evening. I'm sorry, Beverly?
How many applications did you get?
Six. I don't think those.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Well, I'm saying, I'm looking at the number of people that are on the list, sixteen. Just sixteen seniors are applying for the evasion.
Ten is the number, huh? So. Let's tell that. Who's had it the most? I mean, the first four definitely.
I think we need to make a motion to set your number. Correct? How many you want to? Because we want to approve the sixteen, or do we want to go with what we've had approval of ten? And then we're going to have to go through the vetting process of seeing, you know, who's done it in the past, which is something that we'll have to look into and make a recommendation out of the sixteen, who the ten senior people would be. So do we want to increase it to sixteen, which would be a total amount of eight thousand dollars in revenue? Correct? Eight thousand dollars, or amend that to sixteen, or keep it at the amount of ten? I guess is the first.
Again, historically, the cap has been ten. In other years, the board has waived that and increased it, you know, nominally. But again, it's up to the pleasure of the board.
Yeah, but no, I'm sorry, her number was last year.
My sure was twelve, only eleven included. It was twelve in fifteen. It was eleven in fourteen. It was ten in thirteen, ten in twelve. It was nine and eleven. Ten and ten, ten and oh nine.
How should I answer, Mr. Lavash? We have sixteen.
The most it's supplied to has been twelve, and twelve would be a good number.
But how does it affect, where's the money? Talk about the funds.
Go ahead.
Between the five and the eight thousand dollars. I mean, where's the, how does the funding affect anybody?
How does it impact them or us? Them meaning the five hundred dollars off of their tax rate.
Right, us as a town.
Us as a town, it impacts us because it comes out of, again?
The overlay surplus account.
Surplus account, excuse me. Yes.
Right.
So you're, it's a difference in six people, it's a difference of three thousand dollars.
Right.
So you're, you're going from five thousand to eight thousand, so it's a three thousand dollar swing. Sixteen is a pretty high number for our town. Three thousand dollar change is pretty high also.
Oh, with your permission, Mr. Chair, I did speak briefly with the assistant assessor. She does have some room in that overlay account. Again, she doesn't have all of January exemptions in there. That money's put aside again for all the exemptions. So in her opinion, the board could honor the sixteen. It could bear the, just keep that in mind.
So if we, if we went with sixteen and only twelve people sign up, it doesn't matter, you still want to do it?
You want to do it every year.
Correct. So about the things we made today, are we going to leave it at ten, or are we going to move it to sixteen?
The town can absorb it. I have no problems with going to sixteen. It's an election year, it's a census year. Use all the help we can get. And the people who took the time to apply did it for a reason. If there's something we can do to help them, I think it's our obligation to do so.
Well, I agree with that aspect, first and foremost, we're looking out for the seniors. And, you know, we've had a dollar nine increase in tax rate this year. And I know, I've received many phone calls regarding the amount of money people have had to pay for taxes and the recent tax bills that have come in. So I guess, I would entertain a motion that we approve it at the amount of sixteen residents this year.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion, folks? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sixteen. Award for the presidential primary for March first, two thousand and sixteen. Vote expected. Wait a motion to approve the warrant. So what?
Second. I can read it.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, in the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in primaries to vote at polling place A, Shepherd Municipal Building, forty-eight High Street, Warren, and polling place B, Senior Center, twenty-two fifty-two Main Street, West Warren, on Tuesday, the first day of March, two thousand and sixteen, from seven AM to eight PM for the following purchase, a purpose, sorry, to cast their votes in the presidential primary for the candidates of political parties for the following office. Presidential preference for this Commonwealth, state committeeman, West, Worcester, Hamden, Hampshire, and Middlesex District, senatorial district, town committee, town of Warren, state committee woman, Worcester, Hamden, Hampshire, and Middlesex District, senatorial district, and pursuant to the within warrant, we have notified the inhabitants of the town of Warren.
Good job, Mr. Gagner. I will, Mr. Lavash has made a motion to approve the warrant. So we have a motion on the floor.
I have seconded.
Any discussion, folks? We see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Okay, Rev. Sir? Okay, I will need a motion for the chair, to ratify the chairman's signature on the signatory listing for the FY two thousand and sixteen state nine-one-one department training grants and EMD grant. That is a grant that comes in for training for the nine-one-one services. Amount, I had it. Something that we receive annually from the chief. So I will wait a motion to ratify. Chair's.
Second.
See, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You very excited.
I'm double checking. Make sure I hit everything. Number eleven, FY two thousand and seventeen budget discussion. This will be on the agenda every week leading in the budget season. We mentioned it last week, for anybody who wants to come in department-wise, finance committee-wise, to bring up a topic discussion for our board members to discuss something that we may be working on or to help clarify concerns that residents may have. So with that being said, I'll open up to the floor if anybody has any questions or comments. Feel free. Yeah, Barry?
We had a meeting last week. We've assigned departments to the people that were at the meeting. So they're going to start working on that. And I needed to hear, I got my paperwork today that we're going to level fund.
Yes.
That was the last part of what I needed in order to do the paperwork.
Yep.
So we'll probably be starting that our next meeting. They'll be working with their liaisons from each department. Once they have all their paperwork in hand, I'm going to have everything forwarded to Lorena so that she knows what we've got in our hands. Hopefully, we'll be voting on everything as we get each person's paperwork finished. There are some we have to wait for.
Right.
But I don't think it will be like it was last year. We don't have any contracts this year that I can, that I know of. And the schools actually told me that they would have something by the twenty-second of February. So we can look at that a little earlier this year.
It'll be nice, I mean, they got a vote out of the twenty-first of March, so sooner or better. I mean, it gives us thirty days to look at and digest it and see what we're going to do.
Right.
What we can do.
Right.
So yes. I'm sorry.
From what I understand from the paperwork I got today, level fund unless somebody comes forward with a need.
Correct.
Right now, the only person that I heard had a major increase because of legislation was a town clerk. That she was going to need some extra funding because, for her elections this year. That's kind of out of our, our hands, you know? But I have not heard from any department telling us that we need anything major yet.
Little bits and pieces, I've heard, Barry. You know, control, our office is going to have a few little changes to it. We have a Google email now that was funded through an article a year ago, so we have to take that into consideration. So there's some small changes. Hopefully, the departments are bringing them before you and before us, sooner than later. That's the hope. So with that, one thing I want to comment on, and you wanted to touch on something, I'll let you go first, Lorena.
With your permission, Mr. Chair. Barry, just so I'm clear, because I've, people are asking me, are you changing how you're doing things as opposed to just sending out a memo to everybody? And people doing the signups and all of that? So all of that's changing?
It's, we're still going to have the signup, we're still going to have the individual meetings. The change this year is they will have a flow chart in an Excel spreadsheet to work with. So let's say last year they had five thousand dollars in supplies, and this year they need fifty-two hundred dollars. They're going to put in the amounts into their FY seventeen budget. And then there, it will flow so that it automatically gives them a total for them to look at and for us to review. That also helps with regard to the hourly rate. So that if they have an employee that's at ten ninety-three, and they're going to go to eleven thirty-seven, all they do is plug in the rate increase, and that gives them the total for that person's salary.
So is this flow chart paper, or are you going to actually hand somebody a disc or?
No, they're going to get it through email. They're going to get Excel spreadsheets, individual Excel spreadsheets.
And with regards to the liaisons, do you have a list of liaisons in departments?
I do.
Are you sure?
I'm just waiting on my two people that didn't come to the meeting. So I have to be able to assign them something, and they have to agree to it. I'm not just going to assign it.
You anticipate that to be soon again?
Very soon.
I'm getting flooded with questions, so I want to be able to.
I, I can't do anything until I, I needed to see that paper about level funding. I need to know that.
You can call me anytime, but I would have, I couldn't answer you about a week ago, but I did put that out about a week ago.
Well, I got it today.
It, did not, when is your next scheduled meeting here? As your, with your board?
The first week of February.
Third or fourth, I guess.
And then we'll be doing.
Fourth, Thursday?
Yeah, and then we'll be doing weeklys.
I have my attendance now. Go ahead.
I just ask a quick question. So given that memo, is it the intent of the board to ask the department heads to go to the finance committee first if they have any kind of small increase and bring it forward after the finance committee has reviewed it? Or can we bring that forward anytime?
You can bring it forward here next Tuesday.
Okay.
You can discuss it here.
In years past, it usually has gone through finance and then to, I'm just clarifying.
But I'm saying, I, we're leaving this, this time on Tuesdays open for you. If you want to come before us first, if they're not scheduled yet, you can't conform. This is an open slot to come in and put that out there.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, that's all.
Barry may be in attendance, or somebody may be in attendance here that might want to hear it also. So we're leaving that open for the departments. Just to go back to the wage classification. And I put that out there, we're moving forward with the request to move to the eleven dollars an hour starting January first next week, next year, excuse me. My board has asked me to, I had worked on the wage classification extensively last year with the hopes of breaking out departments and making some changes to it and modifying it. And in my honest opinion, I think it's just a dated piece of material that doesn't do the employees of this town well at all. We can't keep competent employees when you're paying them every three years on a salary increase. It's, it's, in my opinion, ridiculous. So I have worked up charts for all of the offices. This will not impact what you're seeing for that starting rate next year if it's approved. But it will impact FY eighteen and nineteen. I'm looking at, presenting to my board tomorrow when we move an open session, the three-year plan with salary increases, similar to what you would see with the police department and your union, our school department and their step schedules, something where our employees are evaluated annually, and there is an increase annually. So there's, where, my board has asked me to present this to them tomorrow. I'm going to give them the documents, we're going to discuss it tomorrow in our meeting. They would like us, like me, we would like to move forward with this in a full board change. I was looking at this as maybe possibly going in bits and pieces, but they have asked that we should attack this as a whole this year and present it that way. So we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow, executive session, then we're moving into open session. Those documents will be made available to my board for them to look at and us to discuss. I'm going to speak to some of the departments also regarding how we're going to achieve some of these things moving forward, the chiefs and that, and the highway, who are greatly impacting Adams Department. So there will be some slight, potentially some slight changes to that, but that will be voted on within the next week or so. We should have a definite, what we're going to present to the town. And that is open for discussion any Tuesday night. Once we decide what we're going to do, they can come in and discuss, and we can break it down for them. So I know there's a lot to handle, but the wage classification is kind of close to me. I really want to see something addressed there moving forward. I mean, I think it's just, it's extremely important to maintain a good health. You're going to make an investment of five hundred or a thousand dollars hiring somebody, then they go for greener pastures. If you look at the wage scale compared to surrounding towns, it's lacking, to say the least.
But you have to take into consideration your income.
Your income?
The town's income. You need to take that into consideration.
Correct, but take a thousand dollars that you invest in an employee to hire them and watch them leave in six months. You divide that thousand dollars up over fifty-two weeks and thirty hours or forty hours a week. That's probably a fifty cent increase.
Yep, you're right. I'm just saying.
If you make the investments.
Take a look at the median income of the town and make sure that it's in line with that median income.
So with that being said, poll teacher contracts, the custodian and my cafeteria contracts up at the Quaybuck Regional School District, I have cafeteria workers making more than our EMTs and our firefighters by four dollars an hour. I'm not saying that they're overpaid, but I'm saying that our people are underpaid for the services that they provide. And it needs to be addressed. And I'm going to fight that one all the way until my, and anybody can go up here and challenge me on it, but I think it needs to be looked at. So, sorry, Barry.
I have to look out for the people of the town and the budget.
I do too.
You know?
And sometimes, if you spend a little more than you need to investment, you'll get the investment in return.
I hope so.
Take one in a minute.
I hope so.
You have to look outside the box. Our mentality on this wage classification, remuneration schedule, or whatever you want to call it, is dated. The easiest way to put it. So it needs to be looked at before we have other problems with, with the wage scale and people complaining about the wages. Let's address it now. Anybody else have anything you want to add about the budget? Mr. Lavash, Mr. Gagner?
Do you have any idea how your timeline will work tomorrow with regard to your closed session?
I would say the executive's going to start at three.
An hour?
And be closed by half hour, guys?
Yeah.
I think in the executive, half hour forty-five, we should be pretty quick in executive when we're going to go in open. We're, we're just finishing up some business from the week.
Oh, you've already done the majority, it's just.
The bulk of it's done. I think forty, half hour forty-five minutes, we should be clean, closed up with executive, and we'll move out in open session. And I'll have those wage classifications and the changes present, and copies. Does this going to show up?
But I still have the one that I have today.
You can use that, because that first step level, and those steps are the first year of the new wage classification when I'm presenting to my board. So those numbers are solid. It's the changes in that nineteen and nineteen after that that will impact. Because you look at those increases on that first step, the average is five to seven percent. When you take a jump from that, that eleven dollar, if you eliminate those first two steps, when I went through and did the math on it, it's about a five percent, an average of a five percent increase, because you're knocking off two steps and you're adding two at the end. So that year is set. It's the two years preceding that is what I want to address and how we want to do that moving forward. All righty. Anything else, guys? Ladies and gentlemen, anybody? No?
All right. Treasury warrants.
Mr. Gagner?
Chairman, make a motion to pay payroll warrant ninety-eight in the amount of forty-six thousand, fifty dollars, eighty-nine cents, and vendor warrant one hundred in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. Both dated January eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen.
I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I will make a motion to approve warrant number ninety-nine, excuse me, in the amount of two hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-one cents, dated one eighteen, two thousand and sixteen. Seconded. Motion's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I want to stop you. That's it for that. New business. Mr. Lavash?
Yep.
Have your new business? Mr. Gagner?
I do. I sat in on the meeting at Mary Lane Hospital on Thursday with representatives from EMS and the hospital and the surrounding towns. It is not, the paperwork has not been submitted, but in my eyes, the decision's already been made by Bay State to close the inpatient portion of Mary Lane Hospital. This will impact the community. I think a lot of people were looking at where could this go? Once things start in motion, they tend to stay in motion. However, I like to look at it as with change comes opportunity. There's an opioid crisis in this area, where being, I believe, last year, per capita, the highest overdose rate in the state. There's a tremendous opportunity with possibly two open floors at Mary Lane to open up some type of outpatient or inpatient treatment center. I would like to see those avenues looked at. Even if they keep the inpatient, they'll still have an open floor. I would still like that to be looked at, because I believe that would have a very positive impact on not just Warren, but the entire community. And that's that. I will be following up on the additional meetings.
So just a question regarding that. Did they discuss the closure of the services and, you mean, like the timeline on?
They, because they haven't put their paperwork in yet, they are anticipating having the paperwork in within the next few weeks. Then Representative Smola was there, Senator Goby were there, and they are both adamantly against it. There's also been a regime change at Bay State in people that both Representative Smola and Senator Goby had been speaking with, who are now gone, which makes things a little more difficult in trying to get to the right people. So this is going to be interesting, to say the least. But.
I was just, Mr. Chairman, I was speaking with Sleckman, Gagner about this issue, and I believe Lorena has, is well aware of it as well. But I did receive a letter in the mail today that I opened up. One of the critical things that we are losing right off the bat is our ability to send employees to occupational health. Effective February first, that office will be closing. So no employees of the town of Warren can be screened there anymore. So that, that in itself is a tough service to lose right off the bat.
So it, it impacts, it impacts everybody.